Good evening and welcome to the Village Board Meeting of the Village of Pleasantville for Monday, February 10th. My name's trustee Steve Lord. I'm filling in for Mayor Share this evening, who's up in Albany, representing the interests of us and all of our fellow residents up at the state. For those of you who are watching at home, this is, the meeting is viewable on PCTV76.org and on Optimum Channel 76 and Verizon Channel 36. Shane, I believe I have those right?
And also 78 and 39.
And 78 and 39, says from the back room. Call-in number here is 914-769-1677. So please, if you'd like to comment on anything we're talking about or ask a question, please call in. Before we get to resolutions, a couple of quick announcements. We are continuing to remind everybody that our food scap recycling program is well underway. Composting bins are still available on the third floor of Village Hall for $20 apiece. We have, our tentative assessment role is set for taxes and we will have a grievance meeting. That's where you can come and grieve the taxes that have been assessed against your property on Tuesday, February 18th, from 6 to 9 at the Clinton Street Center. And at least three of us will be there, along with our village assessor. Another quick reminder, we've had a mild winter so far, but it's, there are still overnight parking restrictions in place. So please remember that your car can only be on the street for 30 minutes or less between the hours of 11 and 7. We haven't had a big storm yet, knock on wood, but those restrictions are still in place. And then another quick announcement, we have published a new edition of the Pleasantville Posts, a newsletter. It's now available on our website on the large tab, or large panel on the left-hand side of the website, and lots of good stuff in there.
Yeah, so we're trying to reach you wherever you are because we know everybody gets their news and information in a different way. So if you're on the news, if you get the news and announcements email, you will get a link that way. You can go to the website, it'll be on our village Facebook page, and there will be some hard copies as well distributed at the senior center, there'll be some at Village Hall, there'll be some at the library around the village. So we're trying to highlight things that we think that you might be interested in around the village. In this particular edition, there's an interview with Robert Hughes, our building inspector, about the development that's happening in the village. There's an article about volunteer opportunities highlighting some of the committees in the village that are always looking for new volunteers, which is a great way, particularly if you're new to Pleasantville, or if you've been here for a long time. But it's a great way to get to know some more people and to be more involved in the village. There's an update on the Manville Road project, a reminder about the 2020 census, which everyone should be aware of because it will have significant implications for us, both budgetary and in terms of representation. So there's information about that and also information about how you can apply to work for the census. And, and some updates about important upcoming dates and so on. So again, that's available in hard copies on the website, through Facebook, through the email news and announcements.
Awesome, great, thank you. So another announcement we have, there's a village election on March 18th. As a reminder, the village is no longer managing and running its own elections, that's now handled by the Westchester Board of Elections. You'll be getting an email from that body, I think, in the next few weeks about where your polling place is for those elections. Once we have that, we'll post it up on our village website. But there's a, sort of a large shift. We used to run these elections, everybody kind of knew how that went. Now that is run by the county and now we're all getting used to how that's being run. But we're thankful that they're taking that on for us. Another thing I wanted to mention is, this was written up in the Examiner last week, I think it was, right? I have decided not to run again for village trustee. That decision was, was long in making, but it's been a very wonderful and, and, what's the word?
Rewarding.
Rewarding, thank you Jonathan. Rewarding experience to serve on this body and to serve with colleagues like the two people sitting next to me and one in the audience who's with us. The people that helped run this village for you are dedicated and thoughtful and smart and caring about not only what they're doing in the village, but what the village is doing for all of you. So it's been a real honor and privilege for me to run, and I hadn't really announced it publicly yet, so there you go. The election is, again, on March 18th. Petitions, you need 100 signatures to have your name on that ballot. Those petitions are due at the Westchester County Board of Elections on the 12th. And from there, I'll, let's see, what else do we have to do? Next meeting, Monday, February 24th. That'll kick off our budget cycle and we'll meet every Monday in work session from that point forward until we pass our budget. And those are public sessions. Please, if you're interested, how could you not be, in the budgets of the Village of Pleasantville, those are the meetings to come and hear us talk about how we're spending the money that we use and to run the village and speak with all of our department heads. Those meetings will be again, every Monday night. Sometimes they'll be followed by a regular village board meeting like this one, other times they'll just be a work session. They start at 7 o'clock here at Village Hall on the second floor. Let's see, anything else? You guys have any other announcements? Anything to add?
Nope.
Good. And then the moment that some of you have been waiting for, any comments or questions from the public? Again, the number is 914-769-1677. Anyone, anyone? Bueller?
I thought I'd wait and see if other people in the audience wanted to go first, but...
Push your way through the line, Jonathan.
That's it. Jonathan Cunningham, 14 Tioga Lane. I, I, I wanted to talk to you guys about a subject actually when I was leaving the board, however many years ago it was, we talked about. And that is actually making your seats more valuable to prospective people who want to run. I don't think you guys have had a raise in 15 years. You guys can check, but, what do you guys make, $3,300? The mayor make $6,600 or?
Something like that.
Something like that.
Still no parking pass.
And, and I'm not necessarily advocating that, although I think it's totally appropriate that you, you vote yourselves a raise, but you could certainly vote yourselves some additional benefits. Parking passes for one, passes to the pool, other things that make the, make, that make the, the job more rewarding and maybe more attractive to other people who would think about running. I actually think you should vote yourselves a raise. 15 years without a raise is a long time. And, and I know that you guys do a lot of hard work for this village. So we may not always see eye to eye on things, but I certainly know what you're doing.
Yeah, and you know what it's like to sit on this side of the...
Absolutely. And, and it's tough for you guys to bring this up, I know, so I'm going to bring it up for you. Steve, you're not ringing in, so you can advocate for it.
Well, maybe I'm good, no.
So, and to that end, I'd also, I also want to address, this may not be the most appropriate time, but you guys are considering this anti lobbying language that another resident brought up at one point concerning what trustees can do a year after.
Yeah.
I would say, my personal opinion, doesn't affect me at all, I don't care what you do. I'd shelve that. The rationale that I have is that you're soliciting people to run on this board from the community. If, if by, by chance they gain enough expertise in what they do to be valuable, that somebody wants to pay them afterwards, they should be given the opportunity to do that. And with certain restrictions. When I did it, I think I'm the only trustee that has ever been in that position, but I got, I came before the Board of Trustees before I accepted the job and got sign off. I also went to the Board of Ethics and got signed off from them. So I think that, I think you can do it with some stipulations. And I'd be careful about what you put in there because Joe's not here tonight, but if Joe went off the board and one of his clients wants to do a zoning change within a year, are you really going to tell Joe that he can't make a living doing, for $3,300 a year that he had, that he can't represent his client, you know, within a year after coming off the board? I, I think it's, I think it's using a hammer when you don't need to. So I, I wouldn't, I would, I would try to avoid doing anything that makes this job less attractive and concentrating on ways to make it more attractive. To encourage more participant, participation by members of the public to actually run for this, this, for the position, to engage in the debate, to put themselves out there. It's, I don't need to tell you guys, it's not easy and it's not always fun, but it is rewarding.
Very much.
And, and I would, I would seriously encourage you to shelve the anti lobbying and put into place some pretty stringent rules that require some vetting by, by two independent boards, or one, your board and the Ethics Committee. God knows the Ethics Committee is overwhelmed and we don't want to put any more on their plate, but...
Taking appointments for August.
But, but I think that there's a way to do this which protects the village, but at the same time creates some flexibility for members of the board so that they don't feel like, you know, I, I have a business in town and all of a sudden I might be at a point where I do this sort of quasi-volunteer and end up, you know, in a, you know, inviting something I didn't mean to, to have happen, so...
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Those, those are just my comments. I, I really make, don't be afraid to, I encourage you as a taxpayer to give yourself at least some additional benefits, if not a raise. You deserve it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Eric, when did we, when did we have that lobbying?
Yeah, so just some context, we were discussing a employee handbook that would cover obviously full-time, part-time village staff members, but also members of our board and volunteer boards as well. Part of that process, a resident came in and recommended that we take an anti, well, a lobbying restriction that the county has in their, in their local laws and their code, which prohibits lobbying 12 months after somebody leaves their position and/or member of a board.
And is it a blanket or is it without permission?
So the way that it's, it's a blank, the way that it's currently constructed in the county law is it's pretty much a blanket.
Got it.
We can make it whatever we want to make it. But just so, the handbook's still in draft form, we're waiting to go through our cyber audit and as part of the cyber audit, they're going to look at our cybersecurity policy that's going to be part of that handbook. So that's where, that's why it's been delayed. Once we get that finalized, we can go out with the handbook and include, not include, amend whatever we want in this section.
Okay.
Right, I mean, I think that the, as you get further away from hyper-local, some of those laws begin to take on a little bit more maybe importance. But when you're dealing on just a local level, I think that, you know, especially as more and more people are working at home or you have their own businesses, that may or may not intersect with the village in any way, in any intended or unintended way, you got to be careful with those, with those, with those kind of rules. And again, as I said before, and I don't want to keep repeating myself, I think there are other ways to deal with it that are just as effective and give you guys as much if not more control over how to manage it.
Yeah, okay.
Could we have the Ethics Committee weigh in?
Yeah, absolutely.
That seems appropriate, right?
Yeah, this, this is in many ways your, your handbook as well, so we're, we can craft it any way you want to prioritize, so certainly we can, we can add that.
Okay.
Great.
I appreciate your earlier point too.
Yeah.
I will say, somebody in my situation, the bulk of that stipend goes towards babysitting fees.
Right, I never made a, I never made a, after taxes, and I gave all mine to charitable stuff around town.
Yeah.
I never made a penny from the, it was more of a, it was almost, I hate to say this, the payment was almost more of a problem than it was worth because after I had to account for it and everything else, but...
And years ago, the trustees used to donate it to the fireworks, right?
Or pizza, or whatever.
No, we used to do the fireworks for the Fourth of July down at Parkway.
I don't remember that, but I mean, it's conceivable.
Yeah, I think so.
But it, it also speaks to the bigger question of how you recruit people to be involved, right?
Correct.
And that was part of what we were hoping to do with this article in the newsletter about different groups around town because what happens often is that they're, well, not always, but there will be a group that works together for a long time and they know each other and they're tightly knit, but you want to bring more and more people in and have more and more people be involved because it is, it is very rewarding. I would say particularly in a time when things are so politically fraught, you know?
Right, yeah.
In the larger world, it's nice to see how things can be really functional and positive and, you know, you're, you're actually able to do good things through government, so, yeah.
Right, but unlike the volunteer board, you have to put yourself through the arduous task of getting elected.
Yes, there are some hoops, yeah.
So there, there is that incremental...
And you have the fiduciary liability of being a sitting trustee.
And you have, and you, and there is that as well, so I, I, you know, and it's valuable. I mean, you know, you, you, we can all complain about our, in particular, our own particular peeves and what we think you guys are doing right and wrong and this, that, and the other thing, and that's all fine, that's, as long, that happens as long as there are people in leadership positions, right? But, but at the end of the day, you know, I, I think we want to, we want to be able to be inclusive, we want the job to, to be as inclusive as possible in terms of, as you said, Nicole, you know, if I've got a, if I got to pay a babysitter...
Right.
I don't want to end up...
Yeah, out of pocket.
Out of pocket to volunteer to, you know...
Yeah, to be fair, I think you're making a good point, which is that there's probably a good third of this community that couldn't possibly do what we're doing because they wouldn't be able to afford to take the time.
Correct, every month. And that's too many, that's, that's just too big.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, and I know Peter, I wish he was here, I didn't know he wasn't going to be here, you know, often pushes back on that, I think he's dead wrong on that. I think he needs to, I think he needs a majority of three to overrule that opinion of his. So, or four. But this isn't about making the job that we want to come in and, for the pecuniary reward. It's not, it's not about the dollar reward. But it is about, David, as you said, being fair and opening up the position to a lot more people who might otherwise not be able to contemplate it because, because they got childcare issues or whatever other issues they have, so...
Yeah.
So I encourage you to really, to not just blow it off, but to actually visit it. And Steve, you're in a unique position where you can advocate for it without, without saying I'm going to benefit from it.
That's right, that's right.
It's interesting because like, I feel like the, some of the towns, Mount Pleasant being an example, the compensation there is enough that it actually makes the position itself much more political.
Correct.
Right.
And I don't think we want that, but I think, I agree that, I think that there's probably, this board would benefit from being more representative of the community and I think that we are not able to pull from the entire community because of the demands in what is effectively a volunteer position, even though it's nominally paid.
Nominally, right, I mean, I think, that's just for the record, I mean, that's what I think the mayor has often pushed back on, is you don't want to get to a point where you're getting people running for this seat for the wrong reasons, right? You need people here who are truly dedicated to doing what they think is best for the village and not because they're getting a, something out of it, monetary or benefit-wise or whatever. But as you've pointed out, Jonathan, we're far, far away from anything close to where somebody would be running it just to get the goodies.
You're almost at the worst of both worlds. It's too little to attract anybody and it's just enough to be a big pain.
Right, right.
So...
Yeah, okay, well, I appreciate you bringing it up.
Yeah.
And I am now in the ability, I can lobby more striptely maybe.
Well, you're certainly going to lobby for your chairs.
Be careful about lobbying, you might, you might be up against...
It's only taken me two terms to get new chairs.
In his last budget, yeah.
Right, well, good luck with the budget too.
Thank you.
And, and as far as the, the, since I'm up here and there's no line, I appreciate the quarterly post. Again, I would say, having, having been in a position where I have tried to outreach a vast majority of the village, I will tell you that if you rely purely on electronic means, you're, you're missing a huge part of the village.
Yeah, for sure.
And I, again, I don't understand the resistance to do a mailing once or twice a year. I've pulled the mayor aside and I've said, you know, there's two huge issues confronting this village right now, honestly. It's the development and it's the, it's all in the development. It's external development from developers looking to develop different pieces. It's internal development in terms of what we're doing on Manville Road and potentially doing at the civic space. Do a big mailing, have a, have a, a very simple sort of synopsis of what's going on and then have a meeting with the village and, and reach out, but mail it to people so that they get it in their mailbox. I, I think having a mailing once or twice a year goes a long ways and you can augment it with your electronic posts intermittently, but the extra, the 2,000 bucks it costs to mail it to the village, it's money well spent as far as I'm concerned.
Certainly about things that are that important, right?
Yes.
We're not talking about turning your clocks back.
And honestly, those are the two things that are important, right? It's only thing, the only thing that's brought people into this room en masse.
And what people are talking about.
Of those two things.
Go and mirrors.
Communicate with them.
Head marijuana, but yes.
And plastic bags.
And plastic bags.
Well, marijuana, I know it's an issue, but honestly, it's not a law yet, so how much of an issue is it yet? When it becomes a, you know...
Yeah, but we're, we're trying, you know, with sort of like concentric circles, you know, so, so there are some, there will be paper copies of this available as well and I think as we...
I do think...
Your, your recommendation is well, well taken. I think as we kind of learn more, then we sort of, like you said, I mean, the, the difficulty is approaching people who get their information in different ways, right? Because even a mailing is not going to work for everyone.
No, it's going to be all types, right.
The majority of people are probably going to put it straight in their recycling bin.
Right.
Some people are going to, are more likely to notice if they get it on Facebook or... So the trick is how you get it to all of those different avenues that, where people get their information out.
Well, the advantage of a mailing, honestly though, is it's the ultimate CYA, right? I mean, you're really covering your...
Right, you know it's gone to everything.
They have no excuse if they've gotten it in their mailbox. If they threw it in the recycling bin, shame on them. But if they get it electronically and they don't see it or whatever, they've got lots of excuses to say, you're not communicating with us. And there has been, there's a big majority of this village who miss the, and I used to advocate for not doing the, not doing the mailer until I actually ended up back in the community and realized how much is actually missed. So again, I'm just giving you a perspective from, you know, a group of people that you may or may not be represented at this point, but I could, I could, I could tell you, I think it'd be real beneficial to reconsider that.
I think doing it at least once or twice a year is a good idea.
Or special editions on big projects like this, right?
On specific...
That's the other thing, Steve, you're absolutely right, is that maybe you don't need to do it. If there's years where it's the same, you know, there's nothing real, but you guys know what stands out, you know what are the hot button issues.
We want people to know about, right?
Yeah, yeah, and that's what we're trying to write about as well, yeah.
Because you know what it's like on this side, we don't want to be making these big decisions without any input, we want the input, we want people to know what's going on there.
Yes.
Right, right. Well, that's why we're highlighting development, highlighting Manville Road, civic space project, we kind of need to figure out what's going to happen with the Manville Road project before we can communicate about that.
But, but, and again, you know, and again, the only thing I will say about the, the post is that yes, you highlighted, and I do appreciate that, a lot of it was backwards looking, not sort of forwards looking, which would be helpful. And, and, and Robert Hughes is great, I love Robert Hughes, but I think the community wants to hear from you guys too. You're our elected officials, so we want to hear not just the mayor, but we want to hear from all of you. We want to know where you stand, we want to know your ideas, we want to hear the debate. And, and I think that that, you know, if you can begin to foment that kind of discussion and back and forth with the community...
Good stuff happens.
Good stuff will happen, absolutely.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you, Jonathan. Okay, so any other comments or questions? Again, the number to call in, 914-769-1677. Going once, going twice, all right, so we'll go to our resolutions. Number, where'd it go?
Twenty twenty eight.
Number 28, Nicole.
Okay. Resolve that based upon the recommendation of the village assessor, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following small claim settlements for the village assessment year 2019. So for 20 Summit Place, there's a reduction, so there's two separate parcels. For the first parcel, there's a reduction in taxes of $113.98. For the second parcel, it's a reduction of $698.10. For 62 Hayes Hills Road, there's a reduction of $330.53. And for 16 Green Meadow Road, there's a reduction of $1,111.26.
Is there a second?
Second.
Shocking. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion approved. Okay, 29, David.
Authorization is settled, 2014 to 2017 tax rachiori, the matter of Schlot Properties versus Village of Pleasantville at Owl. Whereas there are presently pending before the New York State Supreme Court, County of Westchester, tax rachiori proceedings titled, "Matter of Schlot Properties versus Village of Pleasantville at Owl." And whereas these proceedings challenge the real estate, the real property tax assessment of a parcel located at 51 Washington Avenue in the Village of Pleasantville. Whereas these proceedings challenge the assessment established by the Village of Pleasantville for this tax parcel in 2014 through 2017. Whereas proposed terms of the settlement have been reached, providing for a disposition of these claims asserted in these proceedings. And whereas the Village Board of Trustees has obtained the advice and assistance of its counsel, Keenan Bean, PC, with respect to the proposed terms of settlement and duly considered the same. And whereas pursuant to these terms of settlement, the 2000 through 2000, 2014 through 2017 annual assessments of the aforementioned tax parcel will be reduced, thereby giving rise to village tax refunds. And whereas as a result of these assessment reductions, a village, a Pleasantville tax refund will be due in an amount equaling $5,002.56. Now therefore be resolved, the Village Board of Trustees authorizes settlement of these proceedings so as to adjust the annual village assessments of the aforementioned tax parcel for assessment years 2014 through 2017 as follows in the record for a total of $5,002.56. Be further resolved, Village of, that the Village Administration and Keenan Bean, PC is turnees of the Village of Pleasantville, are hereby authorized to take the steps necessary to effectuate these terms, including execution and entry of the consent judgment and the payment of any and all refunds required under the above authorized terms of settlement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, good. Anything we need to add into this, Eric?
Nope.
Pretty straightforward?
Yeah, pretty straightforward, relatively reasonable tax refund.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thirty, Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the hourly rate for the following part-time available recreation assistant job code 0269 for Peggy Ann Ryskens, a rate of $73.34 per hour, effective 1/21/20 for the preschool program.
Is there a second?
Second. $73 now?
Yes, so she, she would make $55 a session. And the way that we do our books, we pay hourly.
Got it.
So we had to translate that from a session income to a hourly income.
She was recently appointed, two meetings ago.
Right.
$55 an hour doesn't tie into the negotiated class rate, so this...
So we have to do this?
This is a happy medium.
Okay. It comes out to $5, $55 a session.
Mary Schwartz.
Yes.
And it's retroactive, back to the 21st?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Thirty-one.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the meeting held on January 27th, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments and questions, or questions on the minutes? Anybody? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Thirty-two.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the Village Administrator to sign a proposal for cyber risk management services with PFK O'Connor-Davies to include a fee of $10,500 and the proposal is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is just a, basically a proposal which we're taking up on from our auditors to look at the village's cyber policies and look at where we may or may not have risk and to affect, is it just for proposals or is it also to affect the solutions?
Both, to recommend and affect where possible, and, and really, you know, we have an IT consultant who has done a great job in terms of cybersecurity, we have many measures in place.
Right.
We've never really audited those measures to see how.
Right.
Yeah, right, right.
No, that's getting increasingly important, just so everybody knows, P.K.F. O'Connor Davies is a very well-known audit firm, they audit the village's books and records every year, and we think that they obviously have a, a very good and deep knowledge of the village, so that also gives them some contextual knowledge around what this audit could look like.
And there has now been real instances of small American municipalities being hijacked and ransomed.
Ransomware.
So it's worth it.
Definitely worth it. Good, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Thirty-three.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated February twenty-tenth, two thousand twenty for fiscal year two thousand twenty, covering check numbers nine six zero one one to nine six one six seven as listed below, from the general fund, one hundred and sixty-three thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents, from the water fund, four thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-five cents, from the capital fund, one hundred and sixty-four thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty, eighty-eight cents, from the refuse fund, two thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-eight cents, for a total of three hundred and thirty-five thousand ten dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Good. Any comments on the check register?
What was it from the capital fund this time, is it the, the truck?
We, we have the lights on Parkway Field.
Uh-huh.
Let's see, what else?
I think the payment was in there for the.
For the, the waste truck or whatever?
The, one of the pickup trucks.
Pickup trucks came in.
That's about forty-six thousand right there.
And the Parkway lights, are they in time for the spring season?
We're hoping so, it's all weather dependent, but Jeff and the crew has been out, have been out laying the conduit down, so they're trying to work with the weather.
Right, as long as there's not, if the ground's not frozen, they should be able to get.
Right, so we're, we're looking pretty good.
Cool.
That's good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Thirty-four, Nicole.
So authorization to settle two thousand fourteen to two thousand nineteen tax sursuri matter of four thirty Manville Road LLC versus assessor of the Village of Pleasantville. So I'm going to skip ahead to the refund, whereas as a result, the Village of Pleasantville tax refund will be due in an amount equalling approximately fifteen thousand five hundred and seven dollars and thirty, I'm sorry, and sixty-three cents, and that's from the years two thousand fourteen to two thousand nineteen.
You have to read the, now therefore be it.
Be it further resolved that the village administration and Keenan Bean P.C. as attorneys for the Village of Pleasantville are hereby authorized to take the steps necessary to effectuate these terms, including execution and entry of a consent judgment and the payment of any and all refunds required under the above authorized terms of settlement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Same thing, Eric?
Yep. It's a commercial property.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Thirty-five.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approves the hiring for part-time available recreation assistant job code zero two six nine of Mindy Rogers at a rate of twenty dollars, I thought she was already working for us.
Yeah, yeah, she, she's offered her services for fill-in, part-time available help.
Awesome, great.
Great.
Great, we'd love to have Mindy back in any, any way we can, right? Awesome. A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Mindy. Motion approved. Thirty-six.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to enter into an agreement with the town of Mount Pleasant for the purpose of cooperative bidding for highway construction materials. Do you want to?
Is there a second?
Second.
And you want to, there's a letter attached in the record, Eric, do you want to? This is the same, same agreement we do every year?
Every year, and it's a great one, so every year we go in and we go through a cooperative bidding process for asphalt, stone, winter sand, blocks.
Calcium chloride.
Pipes, I mean, the whole nine, so what's interesting is the county's going through a shared services process and they want us to prove how much we're saving on cooperative bidding, really, we haven't gone through that mechanism before, so we're trying to, but I'm sure it's significant.
That's good.
Very good, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Thirty-seven, David.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to enter into an agreement with StarNet Emergency Services to provide standby ambulance services on Saturday, July eleventh, two thousand twenty for the two thousand twenty Pleasantville Music Festival.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is for medical and, and emergency support at the music festival, the only question I have is StarNet is not listed on this form that's attached.
Well, that's, that's who we write the check to, we have to be honest with you, if you were to look in our books, when the invoice comes every year, it's from StarNet.
So you think that's who WEMS really is?
Yeah.
The corporate name is WEMS? So this is actually, I mean, the form we have is with Westchester EMS, that's what we all see on the side of the ambulances and what the folks have on their patches, but I guess the corporate name is StarNet, all right? And I noticed they have two units requested, we've always had two, right?
Yeah.
So that one's always at the field.
Right, okay.
Same price.
Same thing, same price, good, yeah. It was really good having them aboard last, what, two years, two years ago, I think, when it was so hot, remember?
Yes.
All right, good, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Thirty-eight, Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the hiring for part-time available immediate clerk job code zero one eight seven dash zero two, Village Justice Court, Jesus Oliveros, at a rate of twenty dollars, effective two eleven, two thousand twenty.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, welcome aboard, Jesus. Thirty-nine.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the resignation of Jenna Pallaro, part-time recreation assistant for the Panther Club, effective February eighth, two thousand twenty.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anything to talk about there, or?
Nope, just a Panther Club employee, some come and some go.
Thank you for your service, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, and forty, please.
Whereas Pleasantville Lofts LLC, owner of property located at seventy Memorial Plaza, seeks to enter into a temporary license agreement with the village to utilize a portion of